That's what I heard. I don't know if it's true.
Don't let that go to the side. That's pretty cool.
I don't know what that looks like. I guess Shelley would be the one that knows. Unopposed.
Oh, Mayor Price. Actually, somebody needs to see my head.
We have that in our special room, so it doesn't feel like too bad.
Right, that's true.
Just in my little, it just, I don't know. Nineteen teens are quick, you know?
Right.
Not that I'm taking anything from you. I don't mean it that way.
Like black or white?
Oh, black.
No, no contest. Oh, nice. You have to use root black or white.
Oh, dear. This is coming out of my brain.
That's way up.
I want dark, I guess.
Only got five of each.
Okay.
The way one might drop in the snow.
Yeah. No worries. I was just like holding on for my words.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, that was ugly.
It was bad. I think if I had like two or three top worst drives.
Black or white?
Yeah, this one's right up there.
Uh, white.
This is the worst. I could use a new one because you should be.
Are you gonna flick him off right now? I took my black or white. So he's like, why not something more? Where'd we get these?
The worst of your brother's.
Interesting.
One of the worst things I've ever. Yawn.
Oh, sure.
It is the most heinous thing I've ever.
My brother is.
New year, new me.
You didn't see, you guys seen already, black or white?
Oh.
Sure.
Brutal.
Oh, nice. Yeah. Johnson, black or white?
White, because black will just.
Oh, white won't.
We're missing.
No.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm on there now, but for some reason it's showing up as R. I don't know why. My logo.
Yeah, that's okay. So, I don't think there's.
Jenny. Jenny, I might ask if you listen.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you a shout out.
Yeah. I think it's helpful just because like there's kind of a funny period, so it's crazy. Yeah, so like, because you know, sometimes.
Yeah, I know. I, um, I don't know, um, is there any detail? You know, there's everything that.
Todd's item was.
What's that?
Todd's item was like. I don't know.
Well, I think, I think, I think you're really. The only thing I don't understand is the control point. But I think.
Let's hope.
Really, right?
Yeah.
Is that the item you're talking about?
Yeah. But otherwise, I think.
Councilor La Dean, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine, Mayor. I'm pulling into the parking lot right now.
We'll wait for you.
No template. Yeah, and well, if the foreman's not on duty, then the temp somehow will step up, okay? Because. That's not true, yeah. No, it's not.
I think it was on the main template.
So, so let's just. All the, um, a rate at the. Training. Point. So that they have a floor. It can never be paid under their trade skill level. They could pay. Which group? Create another pay scale. H in conversation. G, so H is a little higher. And you're in those.
Counselor Ben Sickle. Official question. I had a person reach out that is looking to start in daycare.
Hmm, I was gonna email like that today.
Joshua Eppinger. His wife. And he was thinking about starting daycare, wants to know if funds are available. So, I forward you a paper.
Yeah. If you wanna, like, see, see when it's responded to. Can you just have it? Uh, we still.
I don't know. She isn't too into it. Table. So I don't know when they would even start. That's also something.
That way we can just have it. That's the task.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to. I hope that's not. That's quite a lot of noise and stuff, but.
Because everybody will have. A one survivor.
Good evening, councilors. It is six thirty-two PM. I will call the Tuesday, January third meeting of the Superior, twenty twenty-three Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor La Dean. Counselor Ben Sickle. Counselor Sweeney. Counselor Fennessy. Counselor Elm. Counselor Ludwig. Counselor Herrick. Counselor Johnson. Counselor Graski.
We have a quorum.
Item three point one. Do we have John on the line yet? John Winter?
Yes, I'm, I.
Okay. Item three point one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Perfect.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Um, the first item on the agenda is a presentation by business manager John Winter regarding the Douglas County Historical Society.
Mr. Winter.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry I can't be there with you in person due to the weather. I, I decided it was best I get home as quickly as possible. I live in a, um, down Highway thirteen. Um, but made it here safely. Um, so I'll, I'll just briefly go through, um, the PowerPoint that I, I, or, or at least my, my voice, the PowerPoint that I put together. Um, just some highlights from twenty twenty-two and then what we have upcoming in twenty twenty-three. Uh, this past year, uh, we partnered with a new, uh, theater partner, Northern Spotlight Theater. They, um, put, put youth, uh, um, through the, uh, around the Twin Ports, um, in the spotlight. Uh, mostly, uh, um, students in the theater group are homeschool children from all around the Twin Ports. We had our first production in November, uh, You're a Good Man Charlie Brown. It was very successful. Two of our three nights were, were sold out nights. The other night was close to sold out. Uh, our next production, um, is going to be in the first two weeks of March, um, and it's going to be, Butler did it. This year is going to be actually family theater, so it's going to be adult and older youth, uh, involved in the production. Little twist on this version is instead of it in London, it's going to be set in Superior. Uh, the script allowed us to change the setting, so we're going to, uh, add a little bit of local history to the, to the script, uh, getting back to our history theater roots. Um, coming in twenty twenty-three, and this is really a project we started out in twenty twenty-two, is to produce a new Ojibwe exhibit. Uh, our first step in doing this was to work with a, um, student intern from UWS, a First Nation Studies intern. Um, and was really just to, uh, do an inventory of books and documents that, uh, pertain to, um, the, the Ojibways and, and to, to know what resources we had available. Um, the start of the exhibit will, or the, the exhibit will include the region of, um, the point to Fond du Lac and then South de Gordon, and we've decided that the, this, our starting point will use the era of eighteen hundred to eighteen ninety-nine. Uh, this was prior to the, the treaties and then the years passed, uh, the treaties, but that's only a starting point. Um, obviously, we want to expand that out, uh, further in, in the, in the future. Uh, we, we did engage with the Fond du Lac band. Uh, we want to use them for guidance. Um, uh, we had a group visit us. Uh, they also reviewed our, uh, items in our archives, uh, books and documents. Uh, they found some of them very, very interesting. What we've done now is we've scanned those, and we're going to be giving, uh, digital copies of, of that archive, uh, to the Fond du Lac band, so that they will have, um, our, a copy of our archives, uh, for their use. And then our next step, uh, that we're going to be taking is to review our collection and determine what, what, um, is in our collection of Ojibwe origin and, um, to make sure we document that correctly. And we hope to also engage the Fond du Lac band in that process. Um, our, we've created some internship, uh, programs with both UMD and UWS. Uh, we currently have one UMD intern. We had one past intern from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we'll be working with another UWS intern, um, this coming spring. Uh, intern projects, uh, have included, uh, organizing our archives in archive room. Collection, uh, including the session information, uh, photographing our, our collection. Um, and, and then the location of every item in our collection, on, on what shelf, uh, and what box it's in. Um, another intern project, of course, are exhibits. Um, events from the twenty twenty-two, um, one event we had was Fashion Through the Ages Show, uh, went very well. Uh, we had Photography History Month, uh, thanks to a TDF grant, um, for helping get the publicity out on that. Uh, maybe we didn't get quite the, the response we were hoping for, but it was a, a, something new and, and I think it stepped in the right direction and, and brought in some people from all over, you know, uh, the Twin Cities area and all over the, uh, area, upper area of Wisconsin. Um, we had a couple Zoom guest speakers. One was Michael Fox from the Museum of the Rockies, uh, talking about David F. Berry, a frontier photographer. Uh, Michael Fox is probably the, the foremost expert on, on, on David F. Berry. Um, and it was really a, a great to, uh, challenge for us to see how we can, uh, bring in guest speakers from all over the United States. Um, on May twenty-first, we also had a, a Zoom guest speaker, Jean Bubbly, who is the niece of Esther Bubbly, who Esther grew up here in Superior, uh, and became a photojournalist and, um, and that, and really a worldwide traveler. Um, that, that also went real well. Um, another, uh, Zoom, uh, guest speaker we had this past year was Don Jaworski. Uh, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Tony Jaworski, a, a local artist. Uh, Don Jaworski is his nephew. Uh, Don's, uh, topic was the art career, commercial art career of his father, Alex Jaworski, and then he also talked about his uncles, uh, Tony and Nicholas, who were also, uh, artists. Um, in October, we had a guest speaker, Tommy Alecia. Uh, this is the author of the book, Beauty, Beauty at Short. Um, Dave Bancroft, it's on Dave Bancroft, um, the most unlikely of Hall of Famers. Uh, Dave grew up in Iowa, but then came to Superior to play minor league baseball in nineteen oh nine, uh, went on to a sixteen-year career in the major leagues, and was inducted into Baseball Hall of Fame, and the book is, is, uh, a fascinating story. The book is doing very well on Amazon. Um, and, uh, we're very lucky to have Tom come up and, and speak in person. Uh, two traveling exhibits we had, uh, one was on Esther Bubbly. We had that in May, from May first to actually July sixteenth. Um, Esther Bubbly Photography Exhibit, uh, the exhibit was World War II Jewish Defense Workers in Washington DC. It was from her work, uh, in, in that period. Um, um, and then the other traveling exhibit we had was, uh, started July nineteenth and went through October eighth, and that was the Dave Bancroft exhibit, uh, provided by Tom Alecia, uh, the author, the author of Beauty at Short. Uh, fundraising events, uh, we're looking forward to in twenty twenty-three, uh, Murder Mystery Dinner. Uh, we'll do our Living History Walkout at Greenwood Cemetery. Uh, we'll, as I discussed, we'll do, uh, more theater events. Uh, we've done craft fairs, and we'll continue to do those. We may not make much money on the craft fairs, but they do bring in, uh, people to our building that we often hear time and time again, wow, I've never been in this building. Didn't know you were here. Uh, this past, uh, fall, we had a total of just over four hundred people attend our three craft fairs. Um, so it definitely is bringing people in our doors. Um, other fundraising events we, we've talked about are our Historical Tours of Tower Avenue, Central Park, East End, and bringing back our pub crawl. Um, as potential fundraising events for twenty twenty-three. Uh, other events we have are educational events. At twenty twenty-three, we, in the fall, we'll, we, uh, hope to bring back our History Sunday programming. It'll be, uh, six Sundays, um, where we have various, uh, guest speakers, uh, on, on a number of topics, uh, coming. Um, we'll have hopefully new exhibit openings. Hopefully, we'll be able to open our, our new Ojibwe exhibit, um, in the later part of, uh, twenty twenty-three, if not, early twenty twenty-four. Um, Wisconsin Historical Society is, as some of you may know, has, is, uh, building a new museum, um, but they're going to provide, uh, opportunities for traveling exhibits, so we're going to look at those opportunities and hopefully bring in some of their traveling exhibits. Um, Zoom, um, programs, we hope to, uh, continue with some of those also from the Wisconsin Historical Society and other guest speakers. And, and host, this, uh, March, we're going to host the, uh, Douglas County Genealogy Club lock-in. In the past, it's been at the library. Uh, we'll change there with scheduling, and, uh, we're going to host that this year for them on, on March thirty-first. Uh, that's all I have to report. Um, I don't know if there's any questions. Uh, if you don't ask them, uh, tonight, uh, please reach out to me. Um, call me at the, the museum or send me an email at DCHS@. I'd like to have all you come and visit and, uh, take you on a tour of not only our, our exhibits, but also, uh, show our, our collection area and our archive area, and some of the great work we're doing down there.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ben Sickle.
Um, I just wanted to thank Mr. Winter for coming and, um, for prioritizing his safety and getting home safely. Um, this is exactly what we were looking for, you know, just, um, a brief review of some of the activities and programming, which, um, by the sounds of it, is very ambitious, and, um, this was really informative. It was interesting, and, you know, we can comb through P and Ls all day, but, um, this really just helps us and the community understand more about what, um, local organizations are up to, so thank you, um, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those kind words.
Any further questions or comments? If not, uh, thank you, Mr. Winter. Good evening.
Yep, have a, have a good evening and safe travels home, everyone.
Thank you.
Item four point one is the approval of minutes from the December twentieth regular council meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item six point one is a report from Mayor Payne.
Uh, welcome back, councilors. It, it feels like it's been a long time, the usual time for us, but, uh, most of the city staff or many of us have, uh, been out of the building for several days over the holidays. Uh, this, the, the coming months are, uh, for me, something of a policy-building time, and so I told you at the last meeting that I'll be going to Madison tomorrow as they begin their session. Uh, this is sort of the city's first, uh, trip to establish our priorities, to learn about what, uh, the rest of the legislature's, uh, and the governor's priorities are for the coming year, and, and to try and get our foot in the door as early as possible. Again, it's separate from Superior days. Uh, but I've got a small agenda. It will be the first of, I assume, several trips in the spring to Madison. Uh, then in March, I intend to go back to Washington DC. I haven't been in a few years, so I'm going to attend, uh, the National League of Cities Congressional Conference. That's where the NLC, we're a member of the NLC by virtue of our membership in the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, uh, and so that's our national representatives or association. And, uh, so we'll be talking about all things cities at the national level, but I'm trying to schedule a couple of other meetings that might be especially relevant for Superior as well. Uh, so if you have issues of national importance, particularly what we would call agency issues, so things, uh, involving federal oversight or rulemaking, uh, or, or just things with the federal government as jurisdiction in Superior, northern, uh, northern Wisconsin, uh, let me know. Uh, happy to put that on my agenda or invite you along. It should be a, a pretty fun and exciting trip. Otherwise, most of my conference work, uh, tends to happen in the spring where I do a lot of my learning. Uh, I think I've mentioned to most of you before, I always attend the Congress of New Urbanism. I try to take new folks with me every year. A couple of councilors have joined me on that, so if you have gone, sorry, you're not invited unless the, the council approves that budget, but if you want to come on mine, uh, on my budget, let me know, and especially if you've never gone. This year will be Charlotte, North Carolina. So, uh, that's the only report I have. We're just getting back to work.
Item seven point one is the business of the Human Resources Committee from a regular meeting held December nineteenth and a special meeting held December twenty-second. Is there a report from the chair?
Um. Besides, um, the, um, action items on this evening's agenda, um, our only other item, um, was that we approved, um, the request to fill two mechanic positions and subsequent vacancies if filled in-house, and the vacancies, um, will be due to retirements. Um, so, um, do we want to do these, um, one at a time as far as the recommendations?
Sure.
Okay. So, okay, so clerk, if you could please read those. Thank you.
The first recommendation is to approve updates to the Non-Union Salary and Benefits Policy Handbook to eliminate obsolete public works control point language and update working form and job description and pay rates effective on January first.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion is by Counsel Ludwig, second by Counsel Fennessy. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The second recommendation, recommendation is to approve flexible work policy number zero one point one six, which will eliminate the existing telecommuting policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counsel Ludwig, second by Counselor La Dean. Is there discussion? Counsel Ludwig, your light is still on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The recommendation number three is to approve extending the COVID-nineteen related administration leave policy through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion is by Counsel Ludwig, second by Counsel Sweeney. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item or recommendation number four is to approve the wage increase adjustment of five percent for all non-union employees effective on January first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion is by Counsel Fennessy, second by Counsel Ludwig. Discussion, Counsel Ben Sickle.
Um, I'll be abstaining on this item. Thank you.
The minutes will reflect your abstention. Is there further? Counsel Johnson.
Uh, thank you. Just to, you know, I saw in the, in the agenda packet here in your notes, and obviously, I'm not asking you to talk about anything in the closed-door session, but I noticed that there were some non-union, uh, negotiation, or some union negotiations happening as well. Um, have they received an offer? Are those still ongoing?
Counselor, why don't I hold that question until we resolve this item, and then I'll, I'll allow the chair to answer that. Is there any further discussion on the five percent wage increase for non-union employees? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, Counsel, could you restate your question again?
Yes, uh, thank you. So just, uh, seeing in the, in the minutes that we, uh, from the last meeting, and then you had a special meeting, I believe, on like the twenty-first or twenty-second, uh, there were some union negotiations, and I'm not asking for any sort of closed-door, uh, revelations here, certainly, but, um, just wondering where those, uh, union negotiations are at.
Counsel Ludwig, do you feel comfortable answering that?
I just, um, as far as I'm aware of, they're still ongoing, so.
Uh, were there any other questions for the Chair of the Human Resource Committee? No, we'll move on.
Item seven point five is the business of the Public Safety Committee from a meeting held December fifteenth. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chair. Um, outside of the two action items that you see, um, before you from Public Safety Committee, uh, clearing up some, some more of our, uh, parking in, within the city, uh, Public Safety, uh, continues the discussion on strengthening the city's leash laws. Um, we are continuing this discussion at the next meeting and look to have something to the council in February regarding that. Also had a presentation from, uh, Jen Stank, the Coordinated Response Specialist for SPD. This was a priority of the council, wanted to see how things were going. Uh, she discussed her, her day-to-day operations, including, uh, running the Pathways to Hope program. Discussed her role in assisting the police department and helping those in mental health or chemical dependencies crisis, um, dealing with the follow-up, including, uh, the, the follow-up with those individuals, in, including talking about, um, the resources available to them, um, in, in this community. Discussed, um, some of the strengths, some, some of the things where, where this area needs some improvement, especially in, in the world of mental health or chemical dependency. Um, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions, and if not, I would make a motion to approve both the recommendations of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll actually have to, uh, read.
Read them individually. My apologies.
The first recommendation is to approve ordinance twenty-three forty-two ninety-six and ordinance of Indian City Code, Chapter one twelve, Traffic Code, Article three, Parking, Schedule C, No Parking on Odd Numbered Side of Street, to add Winter Street from Cypress Avenue to Hammond Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counsel La Dean, second by Counsel Johnson. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommendation number two is to approve ordinance twenty- Recommendation number two is to approve ordinance twenty-three forty-two ninety-seven and ordinance of Indian City Code, Chapter one twelve, Traffic Code, Article seven, Schedule I, Streets Excluded, From Calendar Parking, to add Winter Street from Cypress Avenue to Hammond Avenue.
Motion is by Counsel Ladine, the second by Counsel Johnson. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item eight point one point one is the business of the Plan Commission from a meeting held December twenty-first. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, uh, counselors, the Plan Commission, you see the business that they approved in front of you. Three more small business grants. This uh, did not use up all of the money for this particular quarter. So, uh, as usual, that money will roll over. Uh, it's a relatively small balance rolling over, but uh, the commission will decide how they want to spread that out in the next, uh, in the next quarter as we start the new year, whether it's to take the new higher amount, divide it up or, or keep allowing it to roll over some kind of bigger project. No clue which way that's going to go. Uh, we, uh, we also approved the uh, Neighborhood Improvement Fund allocation to a pilot project for landscaping called Scenery and Home. You have that, uh, those details in your packet. That was proposed by Counsel Van Sickle and after the business, we had a, a fairly lengthy conversation about zoning uh, because we will be uh, undertaking a, a complete rewrite of our zoning code this year. Uh, it's a very substantial policy, second only to the Comprehensive Plan, but this one actually has more direct and regular implications. Uh, we deal with the zoning code on a regular basis. So, uh, the goal of rewriting it is to not have to deal with it as often on a regular basis. There will still be pretty significant administrative review as development happens, but right now, almost no new development fits within the existing zoning code. So, it's, it's both obsolete and if we fully enforced it, it'd be a pretty big barrier to development. There's a, a lot of opportunity, however, in a new code and while it can seem really boring, it's actually pretty exciting economic development work. It's, it's not just the kind of economic development you're used to thinking about, like uh, large construction projects or business growth. It's really about developing every single neighborhood in the city of Superior in, in the way we want to see it develop, both preserving the character of existing neighborhoods and designing them uh, for the future. So, it's, it's really exciting. Uh, we've taken a calling that a little bit nerdy, but we're all having a lot of fun with it. So, I'd, I'd invite you to join those conversations, especially as it becomes more public and we create something like a steering committee like we did with the comp plan. So, feel free to forward questions about that to myself or Jason Cirque. Uh, otherwise, my recommendation is to approve all four of the recommendations of the Plan Commission.
The motion is by Counsel Elm, second by Counsel Graski. Discussion, Counsel Fennessy.
Uh, can we pull item number four for uh, discussion?
Uh, yes, we'll divide item number four, uh, but I'll take items one through three first. Is there further discussion on items one through three?
Hearing none, uh, these are the small business grants. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving all three small business grants, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Uh, item four is, is there objection me holding the same motion in second? Counsel Elm and Graski? If not, uh, Counsel Elm and Counsel Graski also made the motion to approve item four, the landscaping program discussion. Counsel Fennessy.
Um, I just want to, I just want to start off by saying that this had a lot of support at the Plan Commission where it, um, where it went first, actually went there uh, twice. And uh, I mean, I think it's a really well-thought-out program. Everyone involved did a nice job putting together the, the details. The, but my support for a program like this really slows down when it's funded by property tax dollars. I'd have an easier time supporting something like this if it was grant-funded as like a pilot program to try and throw some number, um, some money into some of these neighborhoods. Because I'm, I'm all for beautifying the city, but I have a really hard time finding the value in this in spending thirty thousand dollars of property tax dollars to landscape six private lots. And even if I could see the value in it, I don't even believe it's the city's responsibility to put mulch and flowers on private property and then in years two and three, do ongoing trimming and um, weeding. I, I think if, if we were to do some sort of beautification, you know, efforts for um, you know, residents in hardship that this is kind of, you know, geared towards, I think the money would be much better spent helping residents fix up the essentials like siding, windows, um, porches, stairs, et cetera. I, I just have a really hard time supporting this program when it's thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to beautify only six private lots on owner-occupied homes.
Further, Counsel Graski.
Uh, just to clarify, this money, we as a council voted on putting into a neighborhood improvement fund?
Yes, the Neighborhood Improvement Fund. It's, it's a rolling fund within the Capital Improvement Program. Technically, it's grant-funded for the next five years. All of that money is funded by ARPA for the next few years. In the past, it's always been just a regular CIP allocation though.
Okay, so it, we as a council voted on that money as, and to, to go into the neighborhood?
Yes, that's part of the adopted CIP.
Okay.
Further discussion? Uh, Counsel Sweeney?
When we take this money from the purpose that it was intended, does that mean that, that those requests are for, for improving whatever, our null and void? We don't have any?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. Request from the existing neighborhood improvement fund?
Exactly.
Now, the Neighborhood Improvement Fund is a rolling, uh,
Right.
It's not an enterprise fund, but it's, it's a rolling fund and it's got some annualized expenses. Uh, it, its largest expense used to be the demolition of homes and neighborhoods, but we largely don't do that anymore. So, there's a couple of uh, basic property improvement things that we do with it. Uh, so we, uh, I think we mow city-owned lots. If we have to abate private property, like go onto somebody's property, mow the lawn or clear the sidewalks, we'll take money out of that. We usually try to recoup that money. And then there are some planning staff that uh, draw, or, and public work staff that uh, draw some salary out of it. Uh, but the, the point I made to the Plan Commission is it's, it runs a surplus every year. We, our ongoing expenses are not enough to draw down that fund, so it's been growing.
Okay, I need a further expla-- where does the money come from if, if a home is uh, abandoned? Needs to be, we determine that it, we can't save the, the building, the home?
The Neighborhood Improvement Fund.
Right. And so, there are no existing homes in that category right now?
Not that I know of. No, no. The, the, the planning director shook his head emphatically that no, there are no, non outstanding. And part of the reason for that, Counselor, is because when, when we issue a raise and repair on a home, it almost always goes into the vacant home, vacant house recycling program, which you, you actually see later on this agenda. And so, we offer it for very little money, sometimes no money at all. And it's been not a hundred percent successful, but very close to it. So, most of those properties are taken by developers that will rehab them. And so, that's why we, it, that program was never meant to permanently stop demolitions. There will still be demolitions. They've just become so rare that the fund is now, it has a pretty healthy balance.
What is the difference between a house that must be uh, torn down, if you would, versus um, it, it hasn't reached that category? I, I can think of in my district, right off the top, I had four or five homes that are in that category that have, like vacant for three or four years, five years perhaps. They're in serio-- I, I don't know if they can be saved or not, but from what I understand, they're, be very difficult to save them. So, if we're to do something with those, where does, does that money come out of that? Doesn't come out of this fund then?
If it, if a house must be demolished?
Right.
Yes, if a house must be demolished, it does, we pay for that from the, any expenses the city incurs, most of which are in kind. So, uh, but any expenses we actually incur, we, we charge to the Neighborhood Improvement Fund. Uh, the, the answer to your question though, about what the line is, that's a market-driven decision. So, I would argue, there's no such thing as a house that can't be saved. It doesn't matter how much money you're willing to put into it.
I think I do today.
Yeah, so, uh, but, so what we do is we let the market decide. We say, if we will charge you nothing for it, is somebody willing to put the money in to save it? And so far, in almost every single case, the answer's been yes.
When you say it's in kind, that means it's incurred within the city expense, correct?
Yes.
From not being technical, but it's not an in kind per se.
Yeah, in, it is incurred within the city, but say, uh, any, any work performed by the Public Works Department, they don't back bill that to the Neighborhood Improvement Fund.
Right, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I was just going to question and Jason, maybe you can uh, let me know if this, I heard that they're going to r-raise a house on the twenty-third and Oaks. There's a house that's been abandoned there. I thought, I heard they were going to... Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thanks.
Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I think, you know, what I'm hearing, a lot of support for this and it makes sense. I think the beautification of our city overall makes a lot of sense. I think we've probably all heard some form of that uh, complaint over the years and so this makes sense overall. I do have a couple of questions that I was hoping to get answered. Um, are we tracking like, um, you know, I'm just looking at the program overview and what the goals are um, and, and looking at continuing this program, if this is kind of a pilot program, what would we look at as a measure for um, maybe success isn't the right word, but what would we use as an overall measure for continuing this program in the future uh, to make sure that we're using these funds appropriately?
Uh, I'll, Counselor Van Sickle wrote the uh, proposal, so I'll allow her to answer afterwards, but this is the Plan Commission's recommendation now. So, the uh, ultimately, the measurement of success is determined by the council at the time when it determines whether to extend the program. So, you will look at, because there may be some clear definable markers, like did property tax value increase, uh, or did the home values increase in that neighborhood? Uh, were folks able to maintain the property beyond the investment period? Uh, the, uh, did it inspire, this will be harder to track, but did it inspire other similar work in the neighborhood? Uh, and then you can evaluate other things that, that aren't as measurable. Did people just like it? Does the neighborhood look better? Are you getting compliments? Does it seem worthwhile? So, uh, it, it's really similar to the Small Business Grant Program where there's no clear outcomes defined. It's an, it's a direct investment in private property uh, to make it better and to improve the overall community. Only the council can decide if we've met that goal.
Uh, Counsel Van Sickle.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to thank um, the planning staff and the counselors um, and especially the Plan Commission, because um, if you've ever passed a policy through the Plan Commission, you know that there is um, really strong collaboration in programming and um, they take their policy very seriously. So, when you go to Plan Commission, you have to be very prepared and be willing to shift. So, at the first iteration of this program, I drew it most closely from the adopted um, twenty forty Comprehensive Plan that um, is largely the charge of the Plan Commission, which is why I went there first. And the Plan Commission had really good suggestions around and just a lot of really positive feedback. Um, aesthetics is only one small benefit of the program. Um, the Plan Commission um, suggested working in, you know, a lot of native grasses and pollinators that all, that would also help align um, existing city goals. So, a really good example of how we do this now is our Backflow Relief Program. So, that is um, similar price point, um, about two thousand dollars or so per house um, through private vendors and with the same goals of preventing um, harmful runoff in the environment as well as um, um, let me think here. So, it's got similar costs and similar goals on private property. And you'll remember after about twenty years or so, that program was expanded finally because there are only so many houses in Superior. So, the outcome was finite um, in the goal being um, to prevent um, flooding and this is similar in the way that it would help reduce stormwater runoff, which of course helps keep the lake cleaner. Um, so aesthetics is one benefit, um, but there are real environmental benefits. Um, another similar, another similar um, way to look at it is that we already spend um, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on landscaping through the major business corridors in Superior. So, Tower and Belnap, um, we oversee, I want to say upwards of sixty thousand dollars a year to oversee that um, that landscaping contract. There's also a really interesting um, dichotomy here around extraction and installment. And originally, when I did the research for this program, I consulted with the League to see how other cities were spending Neighborhood Improvement dollars. And one of the ideas was to get a dumpster and pu-- you know, have neighbors want to, you know, have kind of a landfill days in their own neighborhood and it would help clean things up. And I think it's beneficial to help, you know, throw out couches and furniture, cars or whatever it is, but I also think it's equally important to invest in our neighborhoods. Now, I think there's something like a quarter million dollars in this fund. So, if we're looking at the stated policy recommended by the Plan Commission, um, you'll see in the minutes, it reads at least six homes, not just six homes. So, that's an important um, detail. And the stated goal with the vendor was approximately two thousand dollars per house. Um, now, the policy is the recommendation from the Plan Commission. The details of the program, of course, still have to be worked out through a contract as well. So, we have some flexibility in that spending schedule, but the Plan Commission did request an evaluation at the end of twenty twenty-four where we could expect approximately twelve homes being done by that. So, you know by that math, it's not thirty thousand dollars, it's approximately twelve. Um, if we're able to expand or continue the funding, uh, we'll certainly talk to neighbors. We'll present before and afters, um, you know, see what went well and where, you know, I expect there will be room for growth, of course. Um, America in Bloom, um, I believe the city won an award for the plantings on the Osagi. There are gardens in the city parks. Um, so we do spend a lot of time and energy beautifying the city. And um, I'll agree with Counselor Johnson, certainly, you know, from north end to the highway, the comp plan was the, the correct structure because so many businesses and because so many residents had weighed in on what they wanted to see and that was to have these neighborhoods specifically spruced up. Now, the Plan Commission um, helped further form that program and we eventually opened up to the entire city being eligible with some preference criteria based on proximity.
Counsel Johnson, your light's still on. Do you have more questions?
I do. Uh, so, I guess uh, in the application process then, is that uh, that goes right through the Plan Commission for each one of the homes that would be approved? Everybody's on the Plan Commission would have a say in how?
Yes, with ultimate council approval.
Okay. Uh, so, oh, so we would get uh, ultimate say on the approval of those con- contracts then? Okay. Uh, so then, you know, kind of just thinking if like two thousand dollars for a home that is a smaller lot versus two thousand dollars for one that's a bigger lot, we could really make a big difference in a maybe smaller lot versus a larger one? So, that was maybe one of the questions I had or concerns of just uh, a specific dollar amount. Is it exactly two thousand dollars or are we just getting like the professionals to tell us, hey, we think we can make, we can do this uh, for this lot and this for that lot, those types of things?
I, I only see three. So, so I want to keep us to the actual proposal recommended by the Plan Commission. There are three hard numbers. Thirty thousand dollars, uh, three years, uh, and uh, at least six homes. So, uh, beyond that, the planning department has some flexibility in what they recommend. Uh, then the Plan Commission and the council have ultimate full discretion, but we would not be able to recommend outside. So, for example, we'd not be able to recommend more money than that nor an, another year into say twenty-six or twenty-seven without further a, a adoption of the program. Uh, but I think it's designed to gear it towards smaller and more impactful properties.
Fair enough. All right. I don't know if that answered my question, but I'll, I'll move on.
Can I take a stab?
Yeah.
So, working with the vendor, um, originally, we, we estimated that um, a graduated approach um, might help build some grassroots marketing. Um, the Plan Com- Um, the plan commission, um, thought that, um, there was maybe a better way, so we ended up scrapping that and just making it the same amount across the homes. So, um, we know that two thousand dollars is enough to make an impact both environmentally and aesthetically. Um, and we will ultimately work out square footage, um, and and the 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 planning staff would will work through those applications and we will, um, try to make the the best choices based on the applications that we get.
So going back to the numbers which you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the twelve thousand, or just in the pilot proposal, it's thirty thousand dollars, but if you break it down, it's twelve thousand, uh, for two years and then twelve thousand for the next two after that, right?
Yeah, twelve thousand, three thousand, so twelve thousand for the initial cohort, twenty-three. That group will then share three thousand among them for maintenance the next year. That same year, we will add a new cohort, which will be eligible for a pot of twelve thousand, which will then the next year be eligible for another three thousand.
And what does that upkeep or three thousand dollars pay for? What does that, what does that do? What do they?
Uh, maintenance of the existing landscaping and planting. So if the, uh, uh, the initial improvements are a larger investment, obviously, like putting plants and make, uh, uh, making major alterations. The upkeep is the smallest amount possible to keep it looking basically the same as when it was created.
So is there any onus on the homeowner to show that they've, uh, I mean, we could have some, a homeowner that comes in and says, yeah, come fix my property and then doesn't do anything with it, and then they would have, uh, we would have to spend a lot more money to upkeep that property versus another one. So is there any discussion that's been had about that upkeep after the fact and many, maybe some onus on the homeowners to help, uh, because three thousand dollars is a whole lot to split amongst all those to for upkeep? So how are we making sure that the the funds are being, uh, well maintained?
Council Van Sickle, you can answer that, then I can.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, the plan commission asked, um, a couple of times about maintenance and how are we going to hold, um, uh, homeowners accountable? And I, um, I just want us to exercise the authority in which we're given in the most positive way. Um, sometimes we hear that, you know, that we can't build things 'cause it'll get burned down or vandalized. And these folks will be applying to be in the program. They will submit a narrative and photos and why they're the best fit. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know of any program that we have where we go back and check to make sure that a business is keeping their brand new tap lines clean or that they're not abusing the the private cameras that we bought through the small business grant or that the refrigerators are being maintained. Um, so I just want us to treat, uh, the residents with, you know, as much trust and respect as possible. They are the funders that make everything possible. Um, but maintenance was an important point, and I agree. Um, so this this has, um, a multi-year effect. And, um, you know, I just think we have to have a little faith if somebody has applied for this program that they really wanna be involved. Um, I've told the story a couple of times where, um, you know, when I was at the senior center, people would call who have just kind of lost not so much the financial ability, but the physical ability to restart or maintain their gardens, um, just looking for some support. So, um, I think it's a very small investment that can go a really long way.
The, uh, maintenance budget, along with the initial cohort budget, will also require plan commission approval. So the way it's distributed amongst the original cohort, plan commission will present a recommended plan to the plan commission, uh, which again would require council adoption.
But they could take the money and and then use it to beautify their house to sell it then? And we would have no control over the next owner that comes in?
Conceivably, so this is a, this is for a property, but, uh, to Councilor Van Sickle's point, yes, we, uh, that's, there's no difference between that and the small business grant program, ev- all three of the businesses we just gave grant to could do that.
Yeah, okay, um, I've got a couple more thoughts, but, uh, I'll let some other folks speak, thank you.
Councilor Sweeney?
I realize this, what I'm gonna comment on is not what we're voting for, but, um, it has to do with neighborhoods. In a neighborhood, if there's, uh, I'll make up the scenario, but it's, uh, it's, I've incurred it twice, you know? Uh, senior citizen has a backup sewer, they can't afford to to pay for it, the city doesn't pay for it. Um, it's a need for the neighborhood, it's a need for this person to stay in their home, they simply can't afford it. It has to be fixed some way. But I I'm from reading this through and now what the discussion is, I understand that this would not cover something like that. But I think that is a far higher priority than, um, and I'm not, I'm not arguing with the beauty and the beast here, okay? But the beast comes before beauty, okay? And the beast would be to fix someone's, they can't afford it, so they can maintain, um, so they can stay in their home. I know this isn't that that's a discussion, and we're not voting on that, but I just thought, I'd like to bring that up, perhaps even think some of of developing a fund that way, because, uh, if the wa- if the sewer backs up in their property, they're responsible, and I get that. But some people, senior citizens especially, have just no way, the house is worth X, it's gonna cost them X minus ninety percent of the value of it. But, and I understand that probably isn't a good investment, but there are some real needs there for people who have a, it's tragic that what happens to them if the sewer backs up, they simply have no possible means of paying for it, so. But this would not be included, and I get that, but I'm I'm just, uh, I'm I'm planting a seed, if you would, using it.
Yeah, I I I get what you're throwing down.
Council Van Sickle, just a moment, the, uh, Council Sweeney, the plan commission did discuss that. The, uh, I I pointed out, we, well, the city of Superior doesn't have that program, it does exist, uh, Northwest Regional Planning, they actually run it for the rural area, and One Roof Housing runs almost the exact program you described as a zero interest, zero payment loan, uh, to cover emergencies. The very specific example you described is is one of the in original inspirations for this program, that the backflow relief valve program where people's basements were actually backing up and flooding, and we created a program to just pay for the repairs. But I think that is different, that's an investment in that person's investment. The point of this, at least when I voted for it at the plan commission, was because it was, uh, public facing and it was an investment in the neighborhood itself. So in other words, whether that person's living there, uh, or they move, or they pass away, uh, if that's in my neighborhood, I still get to walk by a house that's a little bit nicer, my neighborhood's improved a little bit. That was kind of the philosophy behind some of the similar programs we've created as well. I I shouldn't be speaking too much to my own, but I I was a voting member of the plan commission for this. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no? The motion, in the opinion of the chair, the motion carries.
Item eight point two point one is the Business of the Mayor's Commission on Communities of Color from a meeting held December twelfth. Is there a report from any of the members? Item ten point one, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Councilor Herrick, second by Councilor Ludwig, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Item ten point two, I'm recommending approval of a temporary class B beer license for the Douglas County Historical Society for the Christmas musical, which will be held on January fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion is by Councilor Fantasy, second by Councilor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Item ten point three, I'm recommending approval of an temporary class B beer license for Performing Arts Student Scholarship Foundation for the Lake Superior Ice Festival, which will be held on January twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three.
Motion is by Councilor Grasky, second by Councilor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries.
Item ten point four, Housing Coordinator and Planner Sreenis recommends approving the the sale of a Superior vacant to Valley property located at fifteen twenty-five Clough Avenue in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to Clifton Holiday, who anticipates the rehabilitation to be completed eighteen months after the closing date.
Motion is by Councilor Fantasy, second by Councilor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no, motion carries. Counselor, the only other thing I have, I I meant to mention this in my report, the, uh, at, in a meeting in in just a couple of weeks, I'm going to invite the assessor to a committee of the whole where we discuss the revalue that will be taking place in twenty twenty-three. By about the end of the year, we intend to have completely revalued all of the, uh, uh, property in the city of Superior. Obviously, that's going to be a a very significant change and source of anxiety for a lot of your constituents. Uh, we just kinda nomin- we most likely do this a few times this year, but for that first meeting, we nominally picked, uh, right after the, uh, spring primary, so that will be in February. Uh, it's looking like we will ha- it looks like we will have a primary in the third district council race. So, uh, thought we narrow that down and invite those counselors as well, but I'll communicate with the leadership about that. So please start thinking about the revalue, ask questions about it, learn about it. I I hope for that to be a thoughtful and intelligent discussion and debate. If there is no further business, then, Council Sweeney?
I would just, um, I realize this is old business, but I I'd like to give some kudos to Public Works during the holidays for the snow removal. Uh, they had some tough times there, and, uh, I think they just did an excellent job, so.
Thank you, Counselor, we'll we'll forward that along, I know they they very much appreciate hearing that. Council Grasky?
I also just wanted to mention that, um, the Blotnik Bridge project, um, public comment is due by this Friday. So I just wanted to mention that, too, if any of your constituents have questions, I know that North End has been getting the word out, but just wanted to mention that on the floor, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any further announcements? If not, we have no more business and are adjourned, thank you.